The member on my street's here. Dorothy Dry is representing.
Bonnie, I apologize. I mean, we're missing Jay and we're missing Chris.
Is Chris in? Is he in? Chris is not coming?
No one else indicated otherwise.
Well, if they don't come in a few minutes, we'll go ahead and I guess...
We can still talk about that.
We can talk about it. We can talk about it. We won't be able to do anything other than that.
Because I guess I'm gonna hate to waste an hour. No, it's not. We kind of want to discuss it a little bit.
Nobody's home waiting for us.
I see them with their popcorn on their couch. I can't wait.
Now, where are you actually?
You said you were.
Yeah, you said you were gonna be at work.
That's right. Sure, sure you are.
I'll pass the phone down.
Well, you know what? I'm safe. I don't even have to worry about my wife coming saying, "Where were you?" Because she dropped me off.
Oh, she got out there.
She brought me. Now, that's true. I could have had somebody pick me up.
I guess, you know, I can run upstairs and get my room.
Well, I tell you what, if they come in, we'll... Let's go ahead and just kind of... Kind of mull this over. And of course, the thing that we need to be very careful...
Excuse me, Bonnie. I'm wondering, not putting it on TV, I guess, because we don't have a quorum. We'll just have to make note tomorrow if no one else shows up, what happened.
And it wasn't official.
But it wasn't. We didn't have a quorum.
So you don't have your little plaque sticking up? Sorry.
What do you think?
Hey, Karen, we need to make a sign.
Okay, for us to talk about it, or should we not talk about it now? I mean, I don't want to break any laws here.
It's over two here, so that's always considered a meeting.
It's three of us here.
But it's open to the public.
It's an announcement.
Advertised, yeah.
Yeah.
They have the right to be sitting here right now.
Yeah. I mean, it's not... We advertise it, and we've got three of us here.
Well, I think we'll just discuss it. We'll cut it on. If another person comes in, Bonnie can stop and open it up officially.
Okay, that's the way I was thinking.
Yeah.
All right.
I think that's the best thing to do, don't you all? What do you think?
With three of y'all being here constitutes a meeting. So I think we have to put it on TV.
You think it has to be televised? Okay.
Yeah, well, in the name of transparency, I don't think it'll hurt anything.
It won't hurt.
Make it official. We could always say...
We can't vote on anything.
We could always say due to privacy issues that are involved here. I don't know if that would... I mean, because we are trying...
Yeah.
We're trying, I mean, we're trying to be very careful here because some of the things that are in here.
Are they all numbered?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, they're all numbered.
We just have to not use names.
No, no, no.
Exactly. We only use numbers.
And in the future, I don't know what the procedures are for maybe having a closed session to discuss this type of deal.
Because we didn't have...
We don't advertise it, but I think everyone would probably be more comfortable in that environment.
Because you are dealing with people's personal...
That's right. Do y'all want to go ahead then and televise it?
Let's go ahead and do more hurt.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Let me know when you...
That way, we don't get in any trouble.
Right, let's do it. We don't have anything to hide.
We need some trouble.
I usually endorse it too, however, I have no left.
I was thinking that, Rich, and I'm a...
Trouble means I'm in trouble.
I'm in trouble.
Okay, okay. All right, we'll go ahead and start the work session. We only have three of us here tonight, but we need to discuss the... We're trying to get the... Go ahead and discuss the applications for the Planning Commission review of the Conference of Plan Committee, people who are willing to serve. And I think we got a total of 20. When it, Vicky, 20. I've been over them this past weekend and looked them over. In a way, I'm a little bit disappointed, quite frankly. I'm a little disappointed because I don't feel like we... I was hoping for this committee, we'd have a little more diversity, I guess. That's kind of my...
Mine too.
My issue in reviewing them, and, you know, that was... That's a little problem for me. And apparently, you kind of saw that quickly too, yes. I noticed it was only a very few from the eastern and central. And also, you know, the economic...
The household.
The household income is, I don't think, is totally representative. Now, in light of something that Bill has just said to me, and he'll say this too, this committee is really kind of a fact gathering or... And the steering committee will be able to steer the folks. But yet, I still feel like a committee of citizens should be a little more representative. Now, I thought about this last night because I looked at it again to be sure I was thinking along these lines and was correct in my... I wrote down the breakdown of it. And I wondered if even... I don't know how I'd go about... There were several people I had thought to approach. And one was one that had approached me and asked me about serving a game. He had served and was interested in serving a game on the committee. And I thought, when I didn't see his name, maybe he had missed it in some way. Because he was good. I think he served on, I don't know if it was something he did, I can't remember. But he was a good member. And he asked me about it again, was willing. So I had thought, you know, could we possibly have it open just a little while longer, you know, in order to see if we could solicit a few more? 20 is really not too many people, really. Because we've got to have how many on the committee. I think it's about 12, isn't it?
It's really whatever breakdown you all would like. Last time, I believe it was about 12 or 13 for the community participation team, which would be this committee. A smaller group for the steering committee.
I think on Lee, she's picked 12. She's got 12 on her sheet where she... She's not here tonight, but she had picked 12. And I was thinking, 12 was about what we had. But now, enough said of what I've said. That was my initial impression, I guess, or thought. And I don't want to hold anybody up, but yet, you know, I kind of, I don't know. I was just thinking along those lines. But everybody else had their say, and certainly, do what you want to say, what you want to say. I usually don't say anything till the end. I let y'all talk first, but I thought I'd get it off the chest tonight first.
It's unofficial. It's not that serious.
It's unofficial. Doesn't make a bit of difference.
I think, to quote as well taken, the counter side is that, you know, we're not going to get started very much until we have the committees. Do we really... I'm asking a question. I'm not shouting. I'm asking a question. We really want to allow the process to be delayed. But really, as we said the last time, once we get into the late spring and summer weather, I think we haven't gotten together for it, and I think it's going to be pretty dormant fall. So, you know, it's kind of unfortunate that perhaps we don't have the diversity that we like out here. But the question really is, do we get started? I think winds up the... Do we have to have a fairly significant delay? Just to make sure I think about it. I hope I think about it.
Well, this is March, and I was thinking if we... April. I mean, no later than April, if we gave it one more shot. But it may not do a bit of good. It may not have another one... We may not have another person submit an application.
I mean, it seems to be your issue is the same as mine, is more of the economic breakdown. Higher income people. But that's not surprising. I mean, the lower income people are probably working multiple jobs and don't have the availability.
Absolutely. Everyone told me that today.
Right, right. And I saw somebody else that put in, and I saw the emails that they withdrew.
And to that point a little bit, I guess it's easy to forget that Pecosin in general has a pretty high level of high median income. In fact, I believe it's like $83,000 per year per household, which is quite high. So it may... Trending that way doesn't surprise me that much. But I'm not sure how we...
Especially the categories we put in there. Basically, we have three categories that are below the average.
Yeah.
Only one above.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Maybe didn't get the right categories and didn't get to find out really what diversity we have. So, you know, and then the other thing is, some of the districts aren't identified there, but we have addresses. So we can certainly figure out what... To make sure that there's equal representation in each district. It doesn't have to be spot on 444.
No.
But at least to get some kind of balance to it. I think we need to do that. Otherwise, you know, we've got a lot of good information here. We've got good people who are willing to serve personally. I think finding 12 out of 20 is fine.
I think, I honestly think that trying to pick 12 out of 20 might be difficult. But I guess, I think we need to... And I have to answer. I'm really good at asking questions, but I don't have to answer. But, you know, the thought of me before is, okay, yeah. We're going to tell some people, "We thank you very much for applying. We're not interested." That could have a real negative connotation, especially, and I'm not going to answer that too, but especially if it's someone who got the personal invitation. We didn't, I believe you said that there were like 50 letters sent out to people who've been to meetings. Now, I don't know who they were. I don't wonder who they were. But, you know, the connotation there, if Kevin G., we send you a letter, we sure like to have you join the committee. And every time we send them, that's... I don't think that's very positive.
But that's, you know, I understand, and if getting a letter like that never feels good. But at the same time, there's only so many slots and how many people responded. It would bother me more, though, if I was then told, "Oh, you went out and got more applicants." And I was one of the first applicants, and I wasn't...
I agree with you.
Yeah, I would say, if we're only looking to fill 12 seats, we have enough applicants. We don't need to extend this.
And a lot of them are probably... Well, I'm going to say that some of them, not a lot. We'll lose some of them. And we could use, we could tell the ones that...
We definitely need alternates.
There are alternates. They could be available for alternates. Because we will. It'll be some that will drop out as, you know, as a time, you know, that just... That's going to happen. So you can tell them, they could be alternates. We'll keep them on the list, and there is a possibility.
And keep them informed so that they can get the information. But you also don't want to... I mean, you can't say, "Well, why don't you just carry 16 people?" Then you're getting too big.
Right. Yeah, we can't have that.
Well, Kevin's going to have to manage this group as it is.
Looking forward to it. Something else to keep in mind, I think it's interesting you mentioned alternates. We have several, I believe, married couples that applied. We had an application for each, at least two that I know of. So I think it'd be interesting to make one of them an alternate, one of them a member. But that's certainly open for discussion.
All right, and when we discuss these tonight, you want to be sure and refer to them by the numbers due to... Some things may be sensitive, and we don't want to particularly mention names yet until the committee is formed and in place. So we have numbers on them, and we have some... What I would suggest is you all go through them, and let's each one come up with 12. And let's see how many coincide. Now, we don't have some members here tonight to select them. But, I mean, can we officially go ahead and make a kind of a list that... Or should we, I mean, are we going to... Should we meet again?
Can I make a suggestion that we, instead, you send out through the proper channels, an email that asks all the commissioners to respond to my...
Yeah.
Whatever date with our list.
Let's do that.
Debbie, today, I want that gives you more time to look at them, to consider them. And then just send me your top five, and then...
Really nice little reminder that...
I don't feel real good about that. I can discuss it. But it's just, yeah, let's do that. That's great. It's a little more work for you, Vicky, but that's all. You don't mind. You're good about that.
And I think, you know, certainly, we can have some discussion if there's anything, you know, we want to talk about these today. It seems to me is that you just kind of have to then figure out who we... If we each put 12, not necessarily in any order, I don't know if we're going to be able to find 12. You know what I mean? And it's going to be kind of hard. I don't know if I want to put 12, say, "This is my most important, this is my least." But that may be the only way to really give...
And something to keep in mind, you're not bound by 12. This being the community participation team, if we have a good, solid group, no matter what number that is, we could do 10, we could do eight. I think personally, I'm comfortable even going down to maybe six or seven, if that's what I feel.
12 maybe?
12 maybe.
Well, I wouldn't go more than 12.
Yeah.
That's going to be difficult to manage and keep track of. Also, you want to get... Well, I guess, why don't we just all, why don't we do our ranking? And then we can let staff decide from there how many they feel is working.
Yeah, y'all can consolidate, let's see who had...
There might be a nice little break. Maybe an eight, nine, 10.
Then would y'all prefer that we share that back with you as soon as we tally that up or wait to the April meeting or whatever?
I'd like to know.
Okay.
Send it to me.
I don't think we want to wait till April.
No, let us know.
Because then we'll have to do some notifications.
I just don't recall that the electronic copies that you sent us had the numbers on them.
No, no, they did not. They did not. At that time. They did not.
I'm just saying that since our responses are going to be across our website, they are reusable under FOIA. Like someone should ask. And by saying that they would, that someone should ask. So should we perhaps try to rank them utilizing numbers?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Would we have to share the number with the other members who are not here?
Right, and that will be shared with the other members.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I doubt that anybody is going to submit a FOIA request again.
No, but we'll use...
Maybe push emails.
Because these applications have a lot of personal information. I think, really, the city attorney would find that they're not FOIA.
So these are protected, don't they? They should be.
Yeah. Because, I mean, I wouldn't want my personal information given out.
No.
They gave it to us and trusted it to us so that you guys can make a decision.
Right. I think that's why, Vicky, we'll just use the numbers when we send them to you. I think that's a good thing. Because it's by numbers too, and different things, and personal, like you said.
Where they work and...
And...
Income, whatever.
Income, exactly.
Income, yeah.
One person. I did take note, one person.
Could we potentially contact number three and ask for the second page?
That was your decision. I wish I'd caught that earlier. One lady emailed me her application, and it was very... It was very visible that she hadn't filled that page too, so I immediately emailed her back and said, "I really need the second page." This other individual had a resume attached, which was pretty extensive. So I didn't even notice that she hadn't filled out the second page. But if that's y'all's desire, I couldn't make that decision. Because it was past the deadline back then.
If you would, just ask them, because I would like the information that's on there. If they don't, it's not a big deal if they say no.
No, I'm sure this individual would be happy to do that.
We got the paper behind it here. But it doesn't, it doesn't...
Right, does it answer some of the questions?
It doesn't give the information. I noticed that on the...
And as I shared, I believe, Debbie should perhaps, Bonnie. Leigh Fenixson shared this with a high school, I believe, counselor or teacher. Because she had some seniors that were very mature, very interested in serving. And one of the children, I'm sorry. One of the young people actually filled out the application, show my age. Filled out the application, gave it to the counselor, the teacher. She failed to send it in time.
So we have the application?
No. All I got back from her was, "I'm sorry. I know I'm past the deadline, and I failed to get this application into this high school student."
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying, yes.
You know, I don't have the authority to weigh in any of that.
So they didn't actually even get it?
They never got it.
Okay, I got you. I got you.
Well, I really like the idea of having a high school student on there.
I do, too.
Could be interesting. Different perspective.
I had asked...
Completely different perspective. Somebody's that interested?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
That's entirely up to you all, because, like I said, I don't have the authority.
I don't know. The three of us can make... I don't know. It seems like something the chairwoman could just say is acceptable.
The deadline was arbitrary in the fact that we wanted to make sure we had enough time to get these together for you all to review tonight.
I need to start with this. Start with this. I don't think I do because... I don't think I have a problem with it. Because what you explained to me, it wasn't the applicant's fault.
It was not.
They just didn't get it.
Apparently, they got it to the teacher or counselor in time. She failed.
Just like I thought. If we had somebody who'd apply, it didn't happen. If somebody was really good citizen, said, "Look, I've been out of town for three weeks. I'm about to emerge. I just got up with a valid letter." You know, maybe you do consider those candidates. And that didn't happen. I was thinking about that. If the student did what he or she was supposed to do in the teacher's system, that's not blaming the teacher. Let's just see if we can't make the system work. I agree with you that you see more and more places where they're putting students, even on boards. I mean, college boards, university boards, to get those inputs. And I think it is an interesting perspective.
Close out the consensus here with Bonnie. Madam Chairwoman, if I could ask another question as well. You folks are going to be sending in your top 12s. And then after that, I'm assuming you will make a decision as to which ones will serve on steering and which ones will serve on participation. Is that correct? Okay.
And we were just talking about that on the steering committee now. Probably have, we're going to have somebody from our group.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think, if I remember correctly, last time, it was like...
How many did we have?
I think we had, it was at least three, if not four, planning commissioners.
Forty minutes, it was five planning.
Because the steering committee, it was composed of a lot of commissioners. Then it was like three citizens, and then we had a council member, at least one council member on there that was part of that. And then on the participation, it was less planning commission members and more.
Right. The planning commission members were on the steering, a lot of them were on the steering committee.
But that can all be changed entirely up to you all.
If I recall from the comp, of course, I wasn't here at the time, but it was, I think, five planning commissioners on the steering committee, and there were four planning commissioners, I believe, on the community participation.
Yeah, that seemed like that was too many.
Too many on the, because citizens... I don't think so either. I don't think too many on that. But even though I think on the steering committee.
To meet those numbers, we have to have some commissioners on both committees. And that sort of violates the intention of the committee. The steering committee is supposed to be giving directions. I think we would take in that direction literally. At least that's my interpretation.
I think so too, exactly. And I think we would probably be lucky if we could get four planning commission members. And maybe lucky if we could get three. Got one right there. Just need two or three more.
I ain't looking up.
Well, you might could be an alternate. You don't know. You could be an alternate. We'll think about that, but I think probably four, maybe. How many really want to do it and feel like they can give the time?
Well, to be honest, and I know we didn't say this, but maybe if somebody wants to serve on the... How do we call it? On the steering committee, the planning...
The participation team.
Maybe we should have filled out one of these applications, whether we're on the commission now or not. Frankly, we should be the steering committee. The planning commission should make up the steering committee, involve the council or whoever. But this should be a citizens committee. And it doesn't mean it precludes us, but if we didn't, maybe we should apply for it as well.
I don't think so. I think, I kind of feel like this should be more citizens.
Well, but again, somebody who's now on the planning commission, I would hate to exclude them from that if they really want to.
I think we should ask, we should ask people.
If they want to.
I would submit that the conference plan is a specific function of the planning commission. Every one of us on the planning commission apply to be on the planning commission. We've already done that. We did the board back application. We... So I think we've done that personally. At least we apply to be on the commission, and that's one of our key functions.
Bonnie, you correct me if I'm wrong. We've been through this so many times. But I think the last time around, planning commissions actually volunteered to serve on the different committees. And there were some that served on both, which is a lot of time.
Yes, it is. It is.
But we did have people, remember, Fay Mungo.
Fay did.
I think Fay was on both.
I think she was, too.
Yeah, but the number, that actually...
Yeah, you'd have to. I think Fay did, and I think I served, I don't know.
Do you remember what you served on, Bonnie?
I think I was maybe on the citizens committee. Because Fay and I, it seemed like we came together. And she might have been on the other one, too, but I don't...
But I think you guys at that time volunteered.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Because you know how much time, you know, that you have to offer and...
That's right. Done so many, so many different ones that I'm trying to think. I'm thinking about the ones when Jody was here, how he handled it, because he handled it, you know, a little differently, too. Some had all come together. Well, y'all have thoughts as far as anything you see that you wanted to mention? I noticed we had a few people that ran and were not home, which was kind of interesting.
That is interesting that they would volunteer.
Right. And I must tell you that on some of these, I thought my handwriting was bad. But I did appreciate the typed ones. I know now I should be typing everything. Because I had trouble reading some of these. I know mine is terrible after all the years of scribbling.
Sorry about that.
Tell you, I know when mine deteriorated greatly, deteriorated at York County Circuit Court when I had to sign a million documents. It became very illegible. I think probably we're just going to take this home and digest it a little more. And I like being able to see it like this in this form, too, because this makes it, you know, with numbers on it. That's good. That'll make it easier.
So what's our deadline, Madam Chairwoman?
Well, all right, today is the 21st. Do you want to say, do you think you could... I mean, I know we have Easter coming up, and we have Easter break first of... Should we, let's try to do this before, or let's say, by April 1st? Would that be...
Works for me.
Be okay? Be okay? Did that give you enough time?
Certainly.
Well, I think it...
I mean, I'm not speaking to the folks without hearing.
No, but I think, and we've already got one in.
Yeah, that's right.
So, you know, that's... I think let's get them to Vicky by April 1st, at the end, the close of day on April 1st.
Promise it won't be in April Fool's list.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that.
Don't pass up such a great opportunity.
That's right.
Well, there might be those lists.
And I just want to throw this out there. I think it's just as important as y'all providing us with a ranking. If you feel that there are, you can't come up with 12, or you would like to extend this, we're by no means bound to the timeline. We researched state code. I'm fairly confident we can communicate with the city attorney as well, but I don't even feel that's necessary. The land use map was last updated this past August or September. That technically resets the clock. So, we want to do this right, we want to do it thoroughly. If you all feel that you need more diversity within the applicant pool, feel free to let us know that.
We're not on any big rush.
That's good, but we still...
Absolutely.
Ball is rolling, let's keep it rolling.
Exactly, exactly. And we can't really move forward until we have this team in place, so it's important.
And Vicky, you will, you'll let us know on the young person that you're going to contact?
I'm going to contact them and get that application, and as soon as I do that, that will get a number.
Send it to us, yeah.
And go out as well.
And that way, we can consider that. We should have that before...
You'll have that this week, if she...
Yeah, yeah, if she gets going on it, and we'll know if she's interested, I mean, because if she's...
I know those teachers are very busy. They're not sitting at a desk doing emails like we are, you know, and doing other things. They're up and down and all around, so sometimes it's a day or maybe day and a half before I hear back from her.
Right. Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right, well, with that said, I don't think...
I think I'll go upstairs and telephone a couple of members, because we advertise these, we don't want to have, we want to build a deal.
We do.
Yes, yes.
What are their schedules?